Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your patience as we arrange for all our heads of government to be... to exit their vehicles. We continue to wait and in the interim, we ask your cooperation by placing your cellular telephones on silent or vibrate please. So a timely reminder, could you find your phone even if you think it's on silent, could you just double check for us please? And ensure that it is silent or vibrate. But our heads of governments are arriving and they will be entering shortly. In the meantime, the Jamaica Military Band continues.
And welcome to the Jamaica Information Service livestream. We're coming to you live from the Montego Bay. Now you are witnessing the arrival of the Heads of Government of CARICOM. Prime Minister Andrew Holness is greeting each head and then there will be the official proceeding of the Heads of Government and the flags of the 20 member countries of CARICOM, 15 members and five associate members.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the procession of the flags of our CARICOM member states. The procession of flags is carried out by the honor guards of the Jamaica Defense Force and the Jamaica National Service Corps. The Jamaica National Service Corps was recently established to focus on youth aged 18 to 23. It creates an avenue for young people to be fully empowered through national service. It creates an avenue for young people to be fully empowered through national service. The young men and women spend one year within the Corps and can choose after service completion whether they will sign a longer contract with the Army. This new recruitment window provides training and incorporates prospects for the drafting of some 700 young people. And that will bring up the annual intake of the Jamaica Defence Force to 1,000. The procession of flags of our CARICOM member states carried out by Honour Guards of the Jamaica Defence Force and the Jamaica National Service Corps. The procession of CARICOM dignitaries now follows the parade of flags. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, Ambassador Erwin LaRocque, Secretary-General of the Caribbean Community. Ladies and gentlemen, the Heads of State, Government and Associate Members of the Caribbean Community. The Honourable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda. The Honourable Dr Hubert Minis, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas.
The procession of flags now complete. We are witnessing the procession of the Heads of Government.
The Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados.
You are watching our live coverage of the opening ceremony of the 39th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of CARICOM.
The Honourable Dean Oliver Barrow, Prime Minister of Belize. He is not with us and the next is the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of Dominica. Dr the Right Honourable Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada. His Excellency Brigadier David Granger, President of the Cooperative Republic of Guyana.
This year's conference is being held under the chairmanship of Jamaica's Prime Minister, the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, who assumed the role of Chairman of CARICOM on July 1, 2018.
His Excellency Juvanel Moïse, President of the Republic of Haiti.
Prime Minister Holness will serve for six months until December 31, 2018. He has lead responsibility for external trade negotiations in the CARICOM quasi-cabinet.
The Honourable Romeo Donaldson, Premier of Montserrat.
Jamaica's Prime Minister succeeded outgoing Chairman, His Excellency Juvanel Moïse, President of Haiti. You also heard a resounding applause for the newest Prime Minister of CARICOM, Prime Minister Mia Motley of Barbados.
Dr the Honourable Timothy Harris, Prime Minister of Saint Kitts and Nevis.
While in Jamaica, the CARICOM Heads are expected to discuss matters including measures impacting the implementation of the CARICOM Single Market and Economy, the CSME, crime and security in the region and emerging geopolitical developments which can have an impact on the region's growth prospects.
The Honourable Alan Chastanet, Prime Minister of Zedluja.
CARICOM is actually the oldest surviving integration movement in the developing world. It came into being on July 4, 1973 with the Treaty of Shagaramas, signed by Prime Ministers Errol Barrow for Barbados, Forbes Burnham for Guyana, Michael Manley for Jamaica and Eric Williams for Trinidad and Tobago. The treaty was later revised in 2002 to allow for the eventual establishment of the Single Market and Economy, the CSME.
Dr the Honourable Ralph Gonzalez, Prime Minister of St Vincent and the Grenadines.
We're coming to you live from the Montego Bay Convention Centre situated along the elegant corridor of Rose Hall in the Parish of St James, Jamaica. Welcome to our live coverage of the opening ceremony of the 39th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of CARICOM.
His Excellency Daisy Hare Dalano Bauteles, President of the Republic of Suriname.
Special welcome to those tuning in on PBCJ, on the JIS Facebook page or website, Jamaica Information Service website, and persons tuning in on YouTube. Welcome to our live coverage of the opening ceremony of the 39th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of CARICOM.
Dr the Honourable Keith Rowley, Prime Minister of the Republic of Trinidad and Tobago.
We are welcoming the Heads of Government of the Member States of CARICOM. Now CARICOM is a grouping of 20 countries, 15 member states and five associate members. It's home to approximately 16 million people from diverse ethnic backgrounds.
Our associate members, the Honourable E. David Burt, Premier of Bermuda. Dr the Honourable Orlando Smith, Premier of the British Virgin Islands.
The five associate members of CARICOM: Anguilla, Bermuda, the British Virgin Islands, the Cayman Islands and the Turks and Caicos Islands. The CARICOM community stretches from the Bahamas in the north...
The Honourable Alden McLoughlin Jr, Premier of the Cayman Islands.
...to Suriname and Guyana on the South American mainland.
The Honourable Charlene Cartwright Robinson, Premier of the Turks and Caicos Islands.
The Conference of Heads of Government consists of the Heads of Government of the Member States. It's the supreme organ or highest decision-making body of CARICOM and it determines and provides policy direction for the community.
The Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and the Chairman of CARICOM.
Prime Minister Holness assumed the chairmanship of CARICOM on July 1 and this will continue until December 31. This year's conference is under the theme "Building". This year's conference is under the theme "Building..." My apologies, this year's conference is under the theme "Building Stronger, Resilient, and Secure Partnerships for Prosperity."
Their Excellencies, the Most Honourable Sir Patrick Allen, Governor General, and the Most Honourable Lady Allen. Ladies and gentlemen, the National Anthem of Jamaica. Dignitaries, ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Glenn O. Samuels, President, West Jamaica Conference of the Seventh-day Adventists.
Our heads are bowed, our eyes are closed. Severing God, to you we lift our hearts in acknowledgement of your sovereignty and your divine blessings over our leaders and our people. We pray your guiding hand in this significant conference. We thank you for divine protection from past ravages, and even as our people enter this new hurricane season, we invoke your divine hand to protect us from the ravages possible. And now Almighty God, on the Chairman of this 39th Regular Conference, the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, we ask for wisdom that he guides as you would guide him. For the Heads of Government, we thank you for divine protection as they travel. Grant, O gracious Father, that they'll protect not only the independence we treasure, but guide our people towards economic independence. Into your hands we commit this conference, and thank you for your promised protection and guiding hand. These we ask, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Samuels. Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. It is now time to invite Ambassador Erwin La Rock, Secretary-General of the Caribbean Community, to bring the statements with his opening remarks to the 39th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. Help me welcome him to the microphone, please.
Nineteen of 20 member states, the Heads of Government of nineteen of twenty member states of CARICOM are present here today for the 39th Regular Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government.
Their Excellencies, the Most Honourable Sir Patrick Allen, Governor General, and the Most Honourable Lady Allen, most honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, His Excellency Jovanel Moïse, President of the Republic of Haiti, our outgoing Chairman, Your Excellencies, Heads of State and Government of the Caribbean Community, Honourable Justice Adrian Saunders, President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, Chief Justice, President of the Court of Appeal, Members of Parliament, Members of Cabinet, former Prime Ministers of Jamaica, the Most Honourable PJ Patterson and Mr. Bruce Golding, Heads of Regional Institutions, Members of the Diplomatic Corps, distinguished delegates, distinguished guests, people of the Caribbean Community, ladies and gentlemen all. Today, the 4th of July, is CARICOM Day. Forty-five years ago, on this date, four countries signed the Treaty of Shagaramas. Happy CARICOM Day. As we open this 39th Meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, I must at the outset express my profound appreciation to the government and people of Jamaica for the excellent hospitality extended to all of us. The arrangements put in place for the conduct of the meeting ensure an atmosphere conducive to the productive sessions here in Montego Bay, which has a rich history in the integration movement. It was here in Montego Bay in 1947 that the Conference of the Closer Association of the British West Indies rekindled the integration movement. It was here in 1997 that a decision to admit Haiti to membership of the Caribbean Community was taken, and it was here in 2003 that the Rose Hall Declaration on Community Governance was adopted. The opportunity is with us once again to have a historic moment in Montego Bay with respect to the CARICOM Single Market and Economy, the CSME. The community will be led over the next six months by the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica, as the Chairman of Conference. I have no doubt that under his guidance, the interests of our region will be further advanced. I want to take this opportunity to extend thanks to His Excellency Jovanel Moïse, President of Haiti, for his able leadership of the community since January. It is my pleasure to welcome to the Conference of Heads of Government the Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados. Prime Minister Motley is no stranger to the concerns of the community, and is a committed regionalist who now assumes the role of the Lead Head of Government for the CSME. Prime Minister, I look forward to working closely with you as we advance the CSME. I must also congratulate the Honourable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda, and Dr. the Right Honourable Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, who both returned to Conference after victories at the polls since the last meeting. Might I add, Prime Minister Motley, that you joined Prime Minister Keith Mitchell in a clean sweep. The Honourable David Burt, Premier of Bermuda, is attending his first meeting of the Heads of Government, and we look forward to his fresh perspectives on the issues. We will be welcoming to this meeting His Excellency Miguel Diaz-Canel, the President of Cuba, who will be having his first engagement with our Heads of Government, continuing the fraternal relations between our countries. We will also be welcoming His Excellency Sebastian Pinera, the President of Chile. The community and Chile have strong relations, which no doubt will be enhanced during the discussions between our leaders. Mr. Chairman, Heads of Government, a short while ago, we witnessed the swearing-in of Mr. Justice Adrian Saunders as the Third President of the Caribbean Court of Justice. I congratulate President Saunders on his assumption of this most important office. The CCG represents the essence of our independence and sovereignty, and our commitment to the autonomy of the judicial system. Judges of this court are appointed by an independent Regional Judicial and Legal Services Commission, after a rigorous process of recruitment. The President is appointed by the Conference on the recommendation of the RG LSC after a similar process. It is an integral edifice in the regional architecture, providing certainty and predictability in the interpretation and application of the revised Treaty of Shagaramas, which established and governs the CSME, our platform for engineering sustainable growth and development in our community. Since the CSME was inaugurated here in Jamaica 12 years ago, we all agree that much has been accomplished under its regimes, but we have not achieved as much as we should have by now. Major policy decisions and adoption of legal instruments take much too long to be negotiated. We must do more, and do it more quickly. The success of the CSME is being judged by the public on the basis of our implementation of the measures agreed to that allow our citizens and businesses to benefit. This meeting will include a special session on the Single Market and Economy to look at ways of making it more effective. That session will benefit from the views of a stakeholder consultation, which I convened last month in Georgetown. Participants at that event confirmed that the CSME remained the most viable option and platform to enable the community and its nationals to achieve their goals of sustainable growth and development. They however pointed to areas which needed to be improved substantially. They expressed particular concern about the ease of doing business and the movement of skilled nationals. The participants also lamented the lack of compliance with already agreed measures. They stressed the need for an enforcement and accountability framework to encourage implementation and compliance. It is one of the issues which features among the recommendations of the report of the Commission to review Jamaica's relations within CARICOM and Cariforum frameworks, which is before this meeting. The views and recommendations of that Commission add a voice to the conversation on the future of CARICOM and the CSME. On Monday in Kingston, I had a social media interaction with the youth of the region led by the CARICOM Youth Ambassadors. Their topic of choice was their role in advancing the CSME, for which they displayed tremendous enthusiasm and eagerness to be a catalyst for improving implementation. They also expressed their concerns with respect to issues of mental health and requested a regional approach, just as we are doing with non-comical diseases and HIV/AIDS. The effects of climate change on the region was another topic on which we engaged. Mr. Chairman, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, the vulnerability of our member states to natural hazards and the effects of climate change remain serious challenges to our sustainable development. This is more so in this era of the new normal of mega-storms and other highly unusual climatic events as experienced last September. It compels us to become more climate resilient. We must examine how as a region, we can enhance the capacity to build resilience within member states, to resist the effects and recover quickly from these climatic events. Discussions on this matter were held over the last three days here in Montego Bay, and a report will be presented to the Heads of Government at this meeting. At this meeting also, the Report of the Marijuana Commission will be presented for consideration. This independent commission, comprising of experts in the fields of law, ethics, sociology, psychiatry, medical and social research, and criminology, looked in depth at the social, economic, health, and legal issues surrounding marijuana use. It is a topic that is engaging societies globally, and this report provides an opportunity for a reasoned discourse, not only among our leaders, but the entire community. I must thank the Commissioners, led by Professor Rosemary Bell-Antoine, for their dedication to the task and the considerable amount of work they undertook. The Commission conducted consultations in member states, receiving a wide spectrum of views. These were distilled into recommendations on issues such as decriminalization, medical use is listing as a controlled substance, and advice against recreational use by children and adolescents. It must be noted that medical marijuana presents an economic opportunity for our region. Mr. Chairman, Heads of Government, you have before you over the next two days matters which, if we can conclude on, will have a significant impact on the direction of our community. I close by endorsing to you the words of the Golden Commission as our guide, and I quote, "The value of regional integration, notwithstanding the current wave of economic nationalism in various parts of the world, is as relevant and useful, and perhaps even more urgent today than it was at its inception, and can provide us a more secure passage to a brighter future than each of us trying to row his own boat alone." I do thank you.
CARICOM Secretary-General, Ambassador Erwin La Rock, a national of Dominica. He assumed the office of Secretary-General of the Caribbean Community on 15th of August, 2011.
We will now have remarks by the Honourable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda.
We will be hearing from the Honourable Mia Motley of Barbados. We will also hear from Prime Minister Gaston Brown of Antigua and Prime Minister Keith Mitchell of Grenada.
Thank you. Sir Patrick Allen and Lady Allen, the Most Honourable Prime Minister of Jamaica, Andrew Holness, incoming Chairman of CARICOM, President Moïse, outgoing Chairman, other distinguished Heads, Members of the Cabinet of Jamaica, other distinguished ladies and gentlemen, to include our new President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, His Excellency Justice Adrian Saunders, and I also acknowledge former Prime Minister PJ Patterson, fellow Caribbeaners, ladies and gentlemen. I speak at the opening ceremony of this important Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community because of my party's electoral victory in the general elections of March 22, 2018, that gave me the distinct honour of serving as Prime Minister for a second term. In seeking the overwhelming mandate that we received, my party gave the people of Antigua and Barbuda the secret undertaking to maintain the closest possible relations with our neighbouring states in the Caribbean community in pursuit of our shared objectives. That is an undertaking that my government staunchly intends to fulfil. Acknowledge that the Caribbean is our neighbourhood. We know that none of our countries can pick up and leave for a better area. We recognise that each of our countries has to improve this neighbourhood. We have to make it more prosperous, and we certainly have to raise up the level of its value. We are also conscious that no single CARICOM country has the capacity to face the present or future challenges alone, however much national pride and misplaced bigotry might suggest otherwise. There is an unavoidable interdependence of geographical neighbours that compels cooperation, collaboration, and integration to meet our developmental needs. In fact, geography is destiny. No country can relocate from its region. We are permanently stuck in this geographic space, and we must do all in our power to ensure the success of this region. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a product of the Caribbean Integration Cause. I was born a couple of years after Barrow, Bird, and Burnham reignited the flame of regional integration at Dickinson Bay in Antigua in 1965 by launching CARIFTO. All my conscious life, the light of that flame has illumined my belief that together the countries of the Caribbean would rise above their smallness to forge an irresistible unity that would be our collective economic salvation. The unity of the region is the salvation of our people. Integration is not only desirable, but it is inescapable. But it has been 53 long years since the flame of integration was reignited at Dickinson Bay from the ashes of the West Indies Federation. Surely... Surely, in 53 years, we should have been further along the road to economic integration than we are now. Others started after us, yet they have galloped ahead, creating for themselves internal markets that have enhanced their domestic production and developing the means to access the markets of others. The European Union of Nine started after us, but look at the economic force it has begun with a membership of 28 and others knocking on its door. Ladies and gentlemen, as we convene as leaders of our Caribbean countries, we should not deceive ourselves that the people of our region have great hope for the outcome of our ritual meeting. After 53 years of crawling through the process of integration, disappointment has replaced hope and skepticism has overwhelmed faith. But we have a chance at this summit to change that situation and to restore trust and confidence in the people that we can make and implement joint decisions that will improve their lives, that we can do more than talk, that we can take action. After all, we are in Montego Bay, where in a sense the recognition of our shared condition was first articulated, and where the leaders who preceded us seized the vision of our oneness. It was here in 1947, for instance, that West Indian leaders established a standing closer association committee to draft a federal constitution. That the federal government failed was not the fault of its vision or the validity of its purpose. If anything, both the vision and the purpose remain relevant and compelling today. That is why, despite the siren songs of the separatists among us, the inherent conviction that we can best overcome the challenges that confront us by acting together has appealed to the angels of our better sense. We have only to consider the circumstances or our country's individual collective experience to recognise the crucial importance of integration and unity. The rich countries of the international community might today acknowledge the vulnerabilities of our small states, but nonetheless, they deny us the means to overcome them. We are classified as ineligible for concessional financing because we also run or actually run successful democracies, where the rights of workers are upheld, as are improved wages for labour. The single criterion of per capita income slams shut the door to bilateral and multilateral grants and other concessional funding. The resulting difficulty we encounter in accessing international capital markets forces us to borrow on honourous terms, keeping us in a spiral of debt, or perhaps more appropriately, a death spiral. Many of us are now held hostage to accumulating interest rates on commercial debt, commercial debt incurred to recover from the recurring natural disasters or loss of preferential markets. Yet the Paris Club is immune from our appeals for reasonable rescheduling of those debts, including some forgiveness. And the natural disasters caused by climate change, to whose creation we made little or no contribution, grow in their frequency and intensity. All of us, as we meet here, are deeply conscious that we are in the hurricane season. We each live in fear that many of our countries might be crippled in the coming months, with no meaningful response to our plight from the international community, including those who are the worst perpetrators of climate change. Significantly, we must respond to these developments and their far-reaching implications for our capacity to serve the wellbeing of our people at a time of unprecedented change and unpredictability in the global community. Global rules are under assault. The international system has been weakened, and international law is being ignored. The very difficulties in the international political economy and their effects on our region cry out for more, not less, integration. There should be no doubt that one of the most important solutions to the difficult economic circumstances our countries collectively face is a deepening and widening of the regional integration process. And at the heart of that process must be the realisation of the Caribbean single market and economy, the CSME. I am heartened that the Honourable Mia Motley, the newly-elected Prime Minister of Barbados, has assumed this responsibility for the CSME. Her known commitment to Caribbean integration and her belief in it as a vehicle for the betterment of the Caribbean peoples, together with her own record of delivering Caribbean results, encouraged me to believe that the break which was applied to the CSME in 2011 will now be released and the process will be accelerated. I do not fool myself or anyone else that the process will be easy or swift. It will challenge it, but I know that it cannot remain on pause. And as the Prime Minister of St Vincent and the Grenadines has so persuasively pointed out, and I quote: "CARICOM's current mode of marking time at an historic moment of overwhelming awesome challenges for our region, which compellingly demands a more profound integration, is mistaken. Pausing is but a euphemism for standing still, which in a dynamic world is sliding backwards", end of quote. In fact, I differ somewhat with my colleague in the sense that I believe that the retrogression is more profound, and perhaps we're not sliding backwards, but we are skating backwards. The CSIB calls for us to move beyond functional cooperation. It calls for the commitment of all. Each of our countries has to commit to and implement free movement of goods, people, services, capital, and technology. It is the only way in which our region will overcome the low level of both interregional industry and interregional trade. At the same time, it will have to be recognised that over the last three decades, smaller members of CARICOM have borne a disproportionate burden in the movement of goods, services, and people in the region. The CSME is likely to increase those burdens unless compensatory measures are instituted. Eastern Caribbean countries, the members of the Organisation of Eastern Caribbean States, have absorbed a large number of people from Jamaica and Guyana, particularly over the last three decades. By absorbing those numbers of people, we have eased the strain on the economies of Jamaica and Guyana at a time of need. And that contribution is heightened by the remittances that these migrants send to their home countries. Additionally, in trade, Eastern Caribbean countries suffer trade deficits with Barbados, Guyana, Jamaica, and Trinidad and Tobago. Incidentally, in the wider context of CARIFORM, my own country has also absorbed a significant number of nationals of the Dominican Republic, which now also enjoys a trade surplus with Antigua and Barbuda. The majority of Caribbean nationals who have been absorbed by Antigua and Barbuda are now citizens. They represent the changing face of the Caribbean, where nationalities become blurred and even merged. The reality is, we are all Caribbeaners. I mention these realities not in complaint, but in illumination and to guide our decisions for the future. I am fully aware that in any economic integration process, especially one that includes a single market, there must be gains and losses. The realisation of the CSME can be good for us all, as long as we make provision within it for balance in the interests of all. The compensatory mechanisms in the CARICOM treaty is not only to create balance, but is an investment in the nationals of the MDCs that are now represented in significant numbers in the populations of the LDCs. These are difficult but not intractable problems. If we approach them with the resolve to make the CSME work in all our interests collectively, I believe we can solve them. And as Prime Minister Motley takes up the cudgels of this task, I pledge my government's support for its realisation. In the context of CSME, as much as in the broader consideration of regional integration, I turn attention to regional transportation. The single issue, or this single issue causes the greatest irritation to all our peoples. They are rightly infuriated at the high cost of travel in the region and the profound difficulties to direct travel between our countries. Most frustrated of all is our business community. Even if we solve all the technical issues that permeate establishing the CSME, we will achieve nothing unless we implement the means to transport people and goods across the region. It is an imperative. As far back as 1992, the West Indian Commission made the telling point that, and I quote: "West Indian integration would wither on the vine and die without adequate sea and air transportation services", end of quote. The Commission went on to say that, and I quote again, "that the matter is, in the most profound and fundamental sense, at the very heart of the integration process itself", end of quote. That observation has grown in relevance in the passing years. The leadership of our Caribbean community cannot continue to abrogate responsibility for ensuring the availability of reliable and regional air and sea transportation. We cannot leave it to the private sector anymore than the private sector can leave it to us. It is a joint responsibility that is a precondition of success for a single market in which our business community moves its goods and to the fundamental importance of linking Caribbean people together. Over the years, this issue has been studied, the studies have been studied, they have been shelved, dusted, and studied again. So I say to this meeting, if we are to manifest our seriousness about a single market, and if we are to convince the Caribbean people of our commitment to regional integration, we must act to establish effective regional transportation, even at the cost of a subsidy in its early stages. It's inescapable. The time for talking has passed, the excuses are stale, and they are irrelevant. The time for action is now. Distinguished CARICOM brothers and sisters, the future of our region depends on trust and confidence amongst its leaders, particularly in how we deal with the external community. It will not be possible for us to strengthen our bonds at home if we weaken them abroad. Too often in the international arena, our countries have been divided. Loyalty to each other is sometimes sacrificed on the altar of narrow and short-term self-interest. Principles dear to each of us, as small states, are set aside to satisfy the agenda of some other nation or group of nations. In any event, it is our CARICOM collective that suffers. For we weaken ourselves by our divisions, making it more difficult to regroup to confront the very nations that lure us into convenient and temporary alliances to fight their causes, not our own. There is no doubt that our region is now challenged by deliberate actions that are destroying our fragile economies. The already deleterious effects of de-risking and the withdrawal of corresponding banking relations are well-known, as is the frightening prospect that if these movements continue, our region will be cut off from the world's financial and trading system. The consequences for our economies and our peoples will be nothing short of disastrous. We cannot allow the unilaterally devised and universally imposed doctrines of the OECD, the FATF, the EU, to be elevated above the welfare of our people and the development of our countries. Even as I speak, the financial institutions in many of our countries are obliged to begin reporting to almost 100 countries on assets held by their nationals under the OECD's common reporting standards. It is a well-nigh impossible task, and in any event, very expensive, costing us resources we do not have, and likely to cause financial institutions to flee from our region. Yet if we fail to comply, we will be branded as aiding money laundering and tax evasion. To fight these battles, we need to fight collectively. We need loyalty in our leadership. We need to stand together in the global community to cohere and not to divide, to serve our collective interests and not the interests of others. Today, I call for a unified Caribbean stand for collective Caribbean action, to resist and overcome external policies that are crippling our efforts to provide for our people. Fellow Heads of Government, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, Caribbeaners, I thank you for your tolerance in allowing me to talk at such length on the urgency of renewed regional unity. Here at Montego Bay, we must all recommit to strengthening our union. We need it now more than ever before, and we need it with deeper commitment and greater strength as we face challenges in a world where there has been much talk about the problems of small states but little action to solve them. The task of overcoming our vulnerabilities, of growing our economies despite the odds, of giving our people their rightful share of the world's bounty, will only be possible if we enlarge our strengths by combining them. We should not dither, should not defer, and certainly we should not pause. The urgency is now, the time for action is now. Much love and blessings.
Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda Gaston Brown was...
Thank you, Prime Minister Brown. Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we continue with an invitation to Dr. the Honourable Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada, to address the opening ceremony.
Prime Minister Brown was re-elected to office following general elections on March 21 this year. Prime Minister of Grenada, Dr. the Honourable Keith Mitchell, was also re-elected to office this year on March 13.
The Excellencies, the Most Honourable Sir Patrick Allen, Governor General of Jamaica, and the Most Honourable Lady Allen. Most Honourable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of our Conference of Heads. His Excellency Joanne El Moise, President of the Republic of Haiti and an outgoing Chairman of the Conference. Colleague Heads of State and Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. Honourable Justice Adrian Saunders, President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, and the former President of the Courts, Sir Dennis Baron, Chief Justice and President of the Appeal Court of Jamaica. Ministers of Government of Jamaica and the Caribbean Community family. Members of Parliament, former Prime Minister of Jamaica, the Most Honourable PJ Patterson, my brother. Members and Heads of Regional Institutions, Members of the Diplomatic Community, distinguished sisters and brothers all. Of course, I'm quite pleased to be here in Jamaica, which is regularly called Big Grenada, for this very special meeting. Of course, with my regional colleagues and to have another opportunity to... Of course, with my regional colleagues and to have another opportunity to share with you some ideas which I continue to believe will take this community forward. Brother Prime Minister, my delegation is of course most appreciative of the generous hospitality which has been extended to us by your government and people. Allow me to congratulate my colleague newly-elected Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, Prime Minister Gaston Brown, and my dear Prime Minister friend, Sister Mia Motley of I notice she has taken a page from my book. I hasten to tell her though she has two more pages to go. Colleagues, it seems, it might seem like I've delivered more than my fair share of addresses to this community and may be coming to an end. But as I present today my capacity as one of the Prime Ministers given a new mandate by the people of my country in 2018, I am reminded of the awesome responsibility bestowed upon us, some of us over and over again by the people of our region. For that reason, we owe it to them to be more aggressive in pushing policies and actions that transform the region, turning us into a true 21st century societies. This meeting is occurring in a global context, characterized by the frenetic pace of change, change in political configurations, ideological tensions, social revolution, and an increasing anxiety by significant groups and communities about the economic, social, and political inequality and marginalization. Our Caracan family therefore finds itself at the centre of these global changes, significantly so in terms of phenomena such as climate change and vulnerability and economic and political inequality. Colleagues, the question is this: how does this Caracan family reposition itself to navigate the new global landscape in the context of what must be referred to as the new normal for the small economies of the Caribbean? Colleagues, against the backdrop of these global economic and social challenges, Caraca must respond by fleshing out our own place in this new normal. It is therefore critical that our community not allow itself to be a satellite of any power or group of powers. After over 30 years in the craft of politics in my country, it would remiss of me to not signal to the region the possible perils of taking sides sometime blindly, on the basis of entrenched ideology and philosophical positions. To do so is neither in the interest of the community as a collective, collective group of states, or in the interest of the Caribbean civilization from the perspective of our nationals. I continue to believe, colleagues, that our greatest dividend as small states is in our ability to determine for ourselves on issues that are important to us where our interest is best served, having regard to several factors. Among those are adherence to the principle of fairness, justice, democracy, and the rule of law. In this global arena, the time is high, it nigh sorry, that as a community we also must consolidate our positions on key hemispheric and international issues which hold profound implications for our region. On climate change, colleagues, in the context of the new normal, the 2018 hurricane season is once again upon us. Having witnessed the devastation that we had last year throughout many of our sister islands when I was Chairman of the Caracan Community, the question must be asked, how prepared are we for the next one? What have we done in the months since to individually and collectively strengthen our systems and build the Caribbean resilience? I must commend the community therefore for its efforts in the last 10 months or so. In Grenada, I'm resuming office in March. We took the bold step to commission a new Ministry for Climate Resilience. The mandate of this ministry is to strengthen our coastal and marine environments to help mitigate the effects of climate change. One of our first actions is to introduce legislation that will ban the use of plastic and styrofoam material that are harmful to the environment. Colleagues, as a region, we must also hasten our steps toward the transition to a green and blue economy, understanding that our future development is intrinsically linked to the now successfully, how successfully we exploit these formerly untapped resources. Governance and partnerships. Sisters and brothers, I firmly believe that we in the Caribbean can achieve what other countries have achieved in the area of resilience. Financing is one part of it, but we must also need the will. This new era requires our governments' unwavering commitment to courageous leadership and aggressive pursuit of policies and innovation. It also requires holistic decision-making, planning, and action, but more than anything else, Grenada knows, as Grenada knows only too clearly, and as sure my Prime Minister colleague Motley is already accepting, it will need partnerships for more politicians or academics, the business community, trade unions, churches, civil society, the media, and our diaspora communities alike, technology. We also need a renewed and continuous engagement with our young populations. Colleagues, in navigating this new normal and engaging our youth, there is one sure vehicle to take us forward which we are woefully behind in riding, that is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and perhaps at the simplest level ICT, the Internet and Information Highway. I must say at this juncture that Caracan has indeed taken bold steps in developing the work plan for the Caracan single ICT space. In a few months, we will be launching a multi-stakeholder partnership to fast-track specific elements of the single ICT space. All steps in fully implementing this must continue to be clear, even while we push the proverbial technological envelope, so to speak, in routing out and connecting other programs and policies to transform the community. Our people must be made to feel Caracan. So I'll include here also our need to formulate a consensus Caracan position, and how we are going to deal with the pervasive dynamic and for many of us mysterious global phenomenon which will no doubt reshape our financial, social, and political systems if employed optimally. ICT must not be viewed as merely a peripheral to the ideals which we want to accomplish or something to be added to the education curriculum. Technology impacts every aspect of our lives. We as heads therefore have to be the ones to place STEM and ICT at the heart of what we want to accomplish in this region. Indeed, it appears that every single day, there is some new global development in the technological field. In October 2017, the world gasped, gasped, when Saudi Arabia became the first country to grant citizenship to a robot, yet we continue to grapple with the rights of our own human Caracan citizens. In May of this year, the European Union brought its general data protection regulation into force, and that regulation has the potential to cripple many of our industries if we do not pay keen attention and fix our regulatory systems quickly now. There is a dynamic world, colleagues, unfolding before us, emanating from diverse applications of artificial intelligence which could easily possibly help even with many of our health issues besetting our citizens. There are also simpler applications such as blockchain technology, which is not only restricted to cryptocurrency, it could serve us well in our regional pursuits, especially those related to citizen and other community data. In my view, Caracan cannot continue to ignore this great enablers of our time. We do so at all peril and the peril of our generations to come. Therefore, colleagues, after 45 years, we must look dutifully ahead to the future of this community. In that context, we cannot ignore the urgent need to hasten the speed of integration. This community must be made to work for the benefit of all its members, not just the 2% who happen to be the beneficiary of higher education. Intrinsic in our efforts to serve must be the interest of those in our community who have not had the opportunity for success. We need to look ahead to pursuing and promoting strategic, formal, and practical cooperation between institutions of Caracan and the media to better maximize synergies and create greater results for the people of our region. I will continue therefore, colleagues, to advocate that our governments work collectively towards more accessible and affordable regional transport for the movement of our people, as already well articulated by my Antiguan brother. In conclusion therefore, colleagues, over the next few days of discussions, one of our objectives must not be not only to focus on a results-oriented approach, but to hold each other accountable for the implementation of the decisions that we take. We must use the deliberations of the conference to speak in strong tones, sending a clear message that we understand and in fact, recommitting to both opportunity and imperative for change. We must show any action which contributes to what economists hard in would refer to us as the tragedy of commons, where we believe that our individual actions do not hold larger consequences for the Caracan family as a whole. Let us not leave here hiding behind phrases such as "we agree in principle," knowing full well that we intend to afford ourselves the political room to maneuver when it comes to the non-implementation of key actions and decisions. I've heard the word "agree in principle" too many times in my hair this year. My friends, I believe the deficit between Caracan's relevance and influence, between opportunity and promise, between plans and delivery on the ground, should be at the heart of our deliberation at this 39th conference. The God we serve has afforded us another rare opportunity to get it right, to build a strong, resilient Caracan family, lest we condemn ourselves to mediocrity and to the increasing global irrelevance. Colleagues, I look forward to our discussions and actions. I thank you all.
Prime Minister of Grenada, Dr. Keith Mitchell, coming up next, the highly anticipated-
Thank you, Prime Minister Mitchell.
Addressed by Prime Minister Mia Motley.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, remarks to the opening ceremony will next be made by the Honourable Mia Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados.
Thank you very much. The Honourable Governor General of Jamaica, the Most Honourable Sir Patrick Allen and Lady Allen, Prime Minister Wholness, colleague Heads of Government, President of the Caribbean Court of Justice, the Honourable Adrian Saunders, distinguished members of the judiciary of Jamaica, the Most Honourable Percival Patterson, former Prime Minister of Jamaica, members of Cabinet of Jamaica, members of Cabinet of the Caribbean Community, people of the Caribbean. I take delight in coming after, in every sense of the word, my colleague, Prime Minister Keith Mitchell. I believe I have much to learn and vow that once is never enough. Ladies and gentlemen, I rise today to play a maiden innings, conscious that I will not be compared against a male West Indies cricket team, but the female champions of West Indies T20 World Cricket. But let me say that I really can't tell you how good it feels to be in Jamaica. Jamaica is a country that has always had a special place in my heart. And Prime Minister, I must share with you curiously, that started in adversity, because my first trip to Jamaica on day one, I lost property, and on day three I had Gilbert. But in spite of it all, my love remains strong. Jamaica's untamed natural beauty has been a source of constant inspiration for me. Its vibrant, passionate people, very spice of Caribbean creativity some would suggest. But Jamaica is a place where I also come to sleep and think, and for me, that is a special, special place. And with it, from Jamaica, I carry your music, because always it moves me to a very special place. But I'm equally conscious, as others have said here this evening, of the special significance of Montego Bay as we gather here. I'm conscious that that date, 71 years ago, started a process that has inspired the work of us all, and that we have come here today to commit ourselves again in the shadow of those honourable men to that purpose that binds us as a region. It is no secret that my own country, Barbados, is in deep economic challenges. It is also clear that timely and decisive action by government and by all of our stakeholders in Barbados is needed to pull our country back from the brink. I know that my colleagues appreciate the seriousness of our circumstances, and that they will understand that domestic priorities that the new government of Barbados is contending with are serious. Indeed, many of you have said to me that you believe that our own recovery is critical to this region. But at the same time, I come here, in spite of that crisis, with a very, very simple message, that while Barbados must of necessity look inward to fix what is broken, to restore hope and to heal a nation, my government will not ever stop looking out from within our shores. For Barbados, our Caribbean identity is intrinsic to our values, our culture, and our way of life. Our people in the region share a common history, and I remain convinced that our strength, our survival, and our success lie in being able to mount together against the challenges that- Lie in being able to mount together against the challenges that we face across the region. As I've said on many occasions, including in this country. We are always better walking together than walking alone. So we are here to recommit. And I just said to Prime Minister Mitchell. As I could have said to Prime Minister Brown. Their speeches have spoken to the need for commitment to regional integration. And very often, as they did, we speak in terms of the trade and regulations. But I want us not to forget our purpose and our passion, the people's interests. Behind closed doors at retreats and in isolation from our advisors and our population. We continue to develop these noble and lofty ideas and then delegate them for execution. Hide behind the phrase agreed in principle as Prime Minister Mitchell just said. But recognize that no one is watching us in our words. And I wonder whether that in and of itself does not bring us to the point. That in the same way we speak to our people through this opening ceremony in a speech. That our conversations among ourselves in plenary, not in caucus. Ought not now to be the subject of instant streaming and broadcasts. So that our people understand what we are doing and why we are doing it. I believe that if we were to do so. That many of the things that people relate and restrict only to economic and trade issues. Will come all of a sudden to recognize that we are also. About building a civilization that is premised on the development and wellbeing of our people. I can do no better than to quote a former Prime Minister of Barbados, the Right Excellent Errol Walton Barrow. Who thirty-plus-one years ago. Observed that the regional integration movement is in fact. A fact of daily experience. It is a reality which is lived but which we have not yet been able to institutionalize. He pointed to our failure to find a way of using the collective wisdom of our people. And to communicate the essence and the cultural infrastructure of the regional integration movement. Through trial and error, thirty-one years later. We are moving incrementally, albeit at a pace that may be less than ideal for too many of us. Towards the elusive goal of institutionalizing our lived reality. And yet, we will fail again. If all that we do is to box up within four square walls of regulatory rigidity. We will fail again if we forget people and we forget the cultural infrastructure of which Mr. Barrow spoke. Our political leadership must facilitate and shepherd, not control and stifle. What is most needed, I'm convinced, is for us to give our people the scope to express their natural inclination of togetherness and inclusion. In ways that are productive and beneficial to the region as a whole. Our people should not have to jump through hoops to make this happen. What is needed is for us to foster the genuine buy-in of our people, especially our young people. As we heard Ambassador LaRocque speak to in his address. To do so, we have first to recognize that in twenty eighteen. We have a constituency of integrationists by intuition and belief. A generation of educated, worldly-wise, confident Caribbean citizens. Who learn, live and love together, trade, work and play together. Sharing each other's joys and cry at each other's tragedies. No boundaries exist in the minds of our young people. They are happy to see themselves as global citizens anchored by a Caribbean civilization. They're equally happy to discuss taboo matters such as mental health. That many of our countries are frightened to even talk about. Our young people are special and they are different. And they deserve the joy and full promise of what Norman Manley and Grant Lee Adams gathered at Montego Bay to offer. One thing I'm certain with them in this instantaneous world. They will not wait another decade for us to turn up for them. They will not easily forgive us for any further procrastination or lack of courage. And whether it is coming from Prime Minister Mitchell or Prime Minister Brown or myself. The truth is, time is running out on us. And if we are truly to integrate our people, then. This is what Caribbean people expect us to do. But they expect that this time round, they must own it. And they must control it and they must promote it. If we recognize that in the past, too often, it has been a top-down approach. Then it is critical that we do all that we can at this point in time. To allow the integration movement to be owned by our people. And they understand the successes of it, believe you me. They don't deny the success of a CXE. They understand where CXE has taken us, but is that enough? They understand the successes of the gains we've made in public health and the establishment of CARF. My own Minister of Foreign Affairs playing a critical role in its establishment, but is that enough? They understand the importance of SEDIMA. And Carricris, which we met as COFAP this morning to discuss. And both of which actually point to a more glorious path. Because those two institutions refuse to be hobbled by language. Or by colonization as to who should constitute their membership. They are influenced only by geography. But if our young people understand these things, why are we frightened to move on? To be able to cooperate in other areas where there are clearly opportunities for progress. Non-contemptious areas in which there are no perceived winners or losers or where the benefits are easy to identify. One such area, I strongly believe, is in fact with respect to the blue economy and the Caribbean Sea. We've heard others speak about it. In my own government, I have now appointed a Minister of Maritime Affairs and the Blue Economy. Because our maritime space is four hundred times that of our land area. And unless we come to the understanding of how to conserve and how to exploit economically our maritime area. Unless we understand the patrimony of Caribbean people. As I believe the famous Jamaican Prime Minister referred to the Caribbean Sea. We will not fully be able to deliver to our people. In this regard, we come to understand equally that in a world of limited fiscal space. In a world where others are questioning the viable size of small states. That we have to recognize that we need to do things differently. This afternoon, much pride came to me as I watched. The new president of the Caribbean Court of Justice. Come to this wonderful moment to be sworn in. And largely because I moved around this country and other countries in the region over a course of a number of months. Trying to get us. Trying to get us to come to the conclusion for the establishment of a Caribbean Court of Justice. We were brave enough to take the decision to establish a single institution. Same judges. Same funding, one institution, but to vest it with dual jurisdiction. And the dual jurisdiction allowed it to function as a court of final jurisdiction. For a number of us as a final appellate court. But equally, a court of original jurisdiction as a treaty interpretation court of the region. I ask myself, if we could do it for the CCJ. Why do we refuse to want to move to do it in other areas of functional cooperation? Why do we each want to have a fair trading commission? When we have a regional competition commission in Suriname that can be vested with national and regional jurisdiction? Why do we seek to have separate civil aviation authorities? When we can have a strong regional civil aviation authority that is vested with national and regional jurisdiction? And I can go on and on because our young people will expect of us. Those areas of cooperation where they can be had. In circumstances where they will yield to the government additional fiscal space. For us to address the things that we truly must be addressing in our own smallest way. Similarly, in two thousand and seven, we got together for Cricket World Cup. And we did it. We did it. We let people move throughout this region hassle-free in those ten countries. We gave them a ban. We didn't even have anything fancy in those days. But what we had was an underpinning architecture. To allow us to assure ourselves that the security concerns could be addressed. And we set up a joint regional communication center that allowed us to have an advanced passenger information system. And we became the first region in the world to vet information against Interpol. Switzerland being the first country. And then we stopped and we gave it away. And if we could do it for Cricket World Cup. I don't think we should have to face the tens and hundreds of millions of dollars that we spent. In Cricket World Cup to have to be able to do it for Caribbean people again. It is certainly within our capacity to be able to allow our people to move. Because before a single person leaves any port, we know who is there, who is a threat and how they can be addressed. Therefore, the single domestic space for hassle-free interregional travel must be. A place where we start if we are serious about the single market and the single economy. Must be a place. If we want the buy-in of our citizens. The cost, we can go further to a Caricom multipurpose ID. Is not a cost that needs to be borne by governments. But it's a cost that can be borne by partnership through partnership across governments, the private sector and individuals in our region. But if we do it alone, it will always cost more. Similarly, a single domestic space for hassle-free travel presupposes a single domestic space for transportation. And I think we have reached a point where to talk anymore. About how difficult it is to move from country to country and to do nothing. Is an exercise that if I were not in decent company, I would find a different word to describe it. Our people are intolerant of such idle conversation anymore. And if we are serious about a regional ferry service. Then as governments, we must facilitate its execution by our private sector rather than talking about it at meetings. If we are serious about regional air travel. Then we must address the fundamental concerns of Liat and Cal. And come to the conclusion that we can certainly do better than we are doing in twenty eighteen. With respect to moving people between island to island and country to country. I look forward, my friends. To our being able to also add value, not just to a single domestic space in transport. But to a single domestic space in communication and indeed information, telecommunications and information. Prime Minister Mitchell has already spoken about what is required from the point of view of ICT. I add simply to that rather than to repeat that we need also to make sure that information flows. For at the moment in the Caribbean, we are more likely to learn about what is going on. In Iowa, in Thailand and in every other region outside of the Caribbean than in one another's countries. It is unacceptable in days of instantaneous upload. That is why I ask for us to 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 stream our events and to ensure that simple things. That if every night our television stations and our radio stations can carry five to ten minutes of regional news. It does not cost us anything for us to put that in place. But what it does is to open the awareness and consciousness of Caribbean people on a day-to-day basis. Not to mention the opportunities for economic growth and expansion for them. My friends, I can choose to speak at length today or I can seek to abridge. And I choose to abridge because much has been said about the single market and economy. There was a consultation recently. Tomorrow morning, we meet to address it. For me to address the other matters that have been stated before would be to repeat in a way that trespasses upon your patience. What I can tell you is that we do not accept that we should abandon all notions of the single market and the single economy. While we accept that there are practical realities that would preclude harmonious convergence with macroeconomic policies. And fiscal policies, we do believe that there is significant room still for us to get. With respect to aspects of our economic competitiveness, whether it is in terms of. Electronic commerce, capital markets integration, food security or other areas that will simply make us more competitive. With respect to our productive capabilities than we currently are. With respect to the single market, we need to get the project moving again. And I have not come to give you promise, but come to report progress. Our country has been one of those countries that we have heard. Reflect difficulties with respect to the level of red tape that our region faces. And anyone who knows Barbados well would know that I love the color red, but I do not love red tape. It is self-evident that the matter of accreditation and the issuance and verification of skills certificates. Has come to humbug too many of our citizens in their day-to-day lives. This is of great concern to us. In twenty eighteen, the age of blockchain technology, we must be able to do better at real-time communication. Particularly as we go forward in the issuance of certificates and diplomas that will allow for more ease of verification. But let me share with you a small statistic to show you why we have to change and change urgently. In Barbados, between two thousand and six and two thousand and eighteen. Our Accreditation Council issued two thousand and thirty-nine certificates and verified another one thousand one hundred and twenty-two. Out of the total three thousand one hundred and sixty-one certificates, ten were fraudulent. In other words, point three percent of the certificates that we spent months seeking to verify were fraudulent. It has said to us, and we have instantly agreed as a cabinet, that we need to change how we do business. And that we need to adopt and adapt the most favored nation treatment that we extend to us as countries. The most favored people treatment and extend it to our people. And what do I mean by that? That we have to believe and believe that there is a presumption of regularity and order. And pass legislation that will say simply that if a person submits a certificate. That there is a presumption of regularity and that if that certificate is found to be fraudulent. The person will shift the burden of proof to the applicant to show cause why their certificate should not be revoked. If we do that simple amendment to the legislation. It means that that process which is now taking two and three and four months. Can now be done within two to three days at most with respect to accreditation. Similarly, I would want to address the issue of another topical issue. With respect to our brothers and sisters from Haiti. And I'd like to say to the outgoing chairman that. I would not know how to be responsible for Caricom, single market and single economy today. And to require of our brothers and sisters of Haiti, standards that are greater. Standards that are greater than those that we require from people who do not belong to this community or who are not signatory to the revised Treaty of Shagaramis. Every day, we allow people who are not members of this community to travel freely into the Caribbean without visas. Haiti took the extraordinary step of signing the revised Treaty of Shagaramis and committing to a Caricom, single market and single economy. In those circumstances, my cabinet has agreed to remove the visa requirements for Haiti. Because in our view, it breaches the fundamental tenets that bind us under the revised Treaty of Shagaramis. And those tenants for those who have forgotten relate to non-discrimination and relate to not treating anyone outside of the community in a more favorable manner than we treat each other in the community. And of course, finally, non-reciprocity. Mr. Chairman, Barbados chooses to lead by example and not by default in this regard. In the case of other matters and other anxieties that have been expressed some from this platform this evening. With respect to the difficulties that we may face as a region. For those persons who may want to find succor in areas that may not normally and traditionally be able to accommodate them. I say that we've come to a difficult point in our region's existence. But it is not a point that requires of us decisions that will divide us. I do believe that a review of our purpose and our objects is absolutely needed if we are to avoid the nervousness of what free movement of people means in a Caribbean of large countries and small countries. And what do I mean, Mr. Chairman? That if we set ourselves a commitment to the achievement of minimum development standards for our people with respect. From over thirty-five years ago. Believe that until we address the issue of automaticity of financing of Caricom. We will be spinning top in mud. I still believe his words to be wise. I trust and pray that whether it is in the adjustment of the common external tariff or some other mechanism that we will recognize that if Caribbean people are to succeed. Caricom must be able to deliver and must have the finance to be able to deliver. Indeed, I ask you to recall the words of singing Francine who reminded us in her famous calypso die with dignity. That there will be no honey for Caricom nor any of us if there is no money. And Caricom will die, but certainly not with dignity. Mr. Chairman, it has taken us seven decades plus one to get to this point. There are some, and I was not present there. Who might suggest that if Grantley Adams and Norman Manley were watching us from wherever they are this evening. They would smile as they see that the crucible is still bubbling. But we would want, I am sure you will agree, to send back the message to them. That while the alchemist has not yet produced gold, there is still hope for tomorrow. So as current leaders of this our great community. It is perhaps fitting that we ask ourselves the simple question. Are we the Joshua generation intent upon finishing the business of our founding fathers and leading our people to the promised land? Or are we content to go separate ways? To walk around in circles in a never-ending wilderness? Devoid of the vision and the courage to seek a new path or try a new strategy? Or to end up in a mission that is not focused on the peculiar experience of Caribbean people? The choice truly is ours. I for one, sir, and my friends, will never stop believing. And particularly against the background of a dub track from Slayin' Robbie. That we are always better, always stronger, always working together. Thank you.
Prime Minister of Barbados, the Honorable.
Thank you, Prime Minister Motley. Now, friends, it is time to bring to your attention a group of persons who are as far away from those four square walls of regulatory rigidity mentioned by Prime Minister Motley as you can find. A Jamaican favorite and promising to be a regional favorite. The Hertford Folk and Cultural Group had its genesis in nineteen eighty-one in the community of Hertford. Part of the densely populated cane belt of Westmoreland. Beginning with only four members, the Hertford Folk and Cultural Group has grown to twelve and has made its mark both nationally and internationally. The group is a popular participant in the annual performing arts competition of the Jamaica Cultural Development Competition. And has won for itself an impressive collection of awards. And the very evident mission of the Hertford Folk and Cultural Group is to foster the highest professional standard in the representation of Jamaica's cultural movement to local communities and visitors alike. This has become the hallmark of outstanding performances and you will see in their performance today. Ladies and gentlemen, the Hertford Folk and Cultural Group.
Up a chillah, the webbowl comes from, it runs so fast because of the yam. When you want to know who are the bam, ah because of the rent a yam, the rent a yam, the rent a yam. For when you catch it with the salt mar grill and the salt fish and the coconut oil. When you rock back and lick your big finger, galley you know how to wonder, oh the yum yum sweet. You know how to wonder, oh the yum yum sweet, oh the tau sweet, oh the renter sweet, oh the something sweet.
The Hertford Cultural and Folk Group treating guests to a taste of Jamaica's culture. Right here at the opening ceremony for the thirty-ninth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of Caricom.
One more time, ladies and gentlemen, the Hertford Folk and Cultural Group. The outgoing chairman of the Caribbean community, His Excellency Jevanel Moïse, President of the Republic of Haiti, is now invited to bring his remarks.
Mister and Mrs. Patrick Allen. Governor General of Jamaica. Ladies and gentlemen, heads of state and government. Ladies and gentlemen, heads of delegation. Mister Secretary General. Ladies and gentlemen. I am pleased to speak up within this August assembly in my capacity as outgoing president of organization. I am especially moved to visit for the first time as a head of state, the land of Norman Manley. He whose efforts have enabled the creation of a new society guaranteeing universal balance. I'm also thrilled to be among. I'm also thrilled to be among you, you, the Jamaican people. Who, the land of the talented Bob Marley, whose place of birth had the opportunity to visit. His reggae. Molten Haitian culture and a large part of the youth of my country. I remember of the nineteen-eighties in the name of the Haitian people and in my own behalf. I would like to commend the Government of Jamaica for the great organization of its summit and for the Jamaican people for the warm welcome my delegation experienced. And I also thank the Secretary General for the quality of the documentation submitted to our consideration. And this, by the contribution also of the Secretariat of CARICOM for preparing this conference. I especially greet the arrival of the great honorable Andrew Hollis, Prime Minister of Jamaica as President of our Chairman rather of our community. Mister Prime Minister, I would like to tell you that I am ready to collaborate with you so that your term may be a success for the greatest merit of the region and of our populations. I am especially pleased to address in the name of the government and of the Haitian people and on my own behalf, my greatest congratulations to the very honorable Mrs. Mia Monté Martin. First woman Prime Minister of Barbados for her amazing victory during the elections of May twenty-ten. I take this opportunity to wish her success and progress for the Commonwealth of Barbados. Excellency, honorable colleagues, Heads of State and Government, ladies and gentlemen, Heads of Delegation. We meet again some five months after the Summit of Port-au-Prince, during which we examine issues of extreme importance, notably those having to do with disaster management and post-disaster relief. Unfortunately, the international situation was not favorable to address some key terms and move forward some elements of the national agenda on the issue. Allow me to consider, for example, the issue of the management of natural disasters and post-disaster relief. The evolution was rather positive. I did my very best to promote on the regional level and on the international level, in particular through my participation at the last Summit of J-Seven in Canada, the need to put in place or to reinforce the existing mechanism to find and risk and mitigation of disasters and duration. It's in this context also that this vast June, Prime Minister Hollis and myself were invited by the Prime Minister of Canada to take part at an awareness-raising session of J-Seven on disasters. This invitation does represent both for my country and all the member states of CARICOM an opportunity to have our voices heard on a very important subject concerning the situation of oceans, seas and coasts, in particular the coasts of the Caribbean Sea. My predecessor, Prime Minister of Grenada, just spoke of the problems of styrofoam and plastic objects. We are not major producers of plastic and styrofoam. However, we are the great victims. I believe that the time has come for the member countries of CARICOM get together to say no. To this invasion of the Caribbean Sea with styrofoam and plastics. We on the Haitian side, we're in the process of working with our Ministry of the Environment, with the Ministry of the Interior and Territorial Assemblies to find a sustainable solution to this serious environmental issue. It seems rather interesting to me to point out that the J-Seven countries and the World Bank have promised, and I did say, they promised three-point-eight billion dollars for the financing of responses bearing on resilience and on the issue of gender in areas affected by climate change, by global warning. Moreover, they affirm their commitment to contribute in building a more secure and peaceful world while understanding that the respect of human rights, the state of law and equal opportunity to ensure sustained growth to one and all. So we must unite our forces to materialize these promises because at times, a lot of figures are thrown around, a lot of numbers are thrown around, but talking about numbers is one thing and the availability of the amounts is a different story, ladies and gentlemen. The management of natural disasters requires all at once, management by countries at the national level while contributing to a reasonable approach in this regard that I gave instructions to the proper authorities of my country so that Haiti's contribution to the Special Fund to the Caribbean Disaster Management Agency be paid as soon as possible. And I am of the opinion that the functioning funds for this institution, first of all, ensured by the contribution by member countries because we are states, the input of the technical and financial partners should be only a means to reinforce our action. During this hurricane period that ends on November thirty, I exhorted my brothers and friends of the CARICOM to upgrade, update their contribution to the fund and be more, be more willing to look at this fund so that we can act together. I hope that the report for the revival of the Caribbean will be reported and validated during the second semester of twenty-eighteen. At the meeting held in Port-au-Prince last February, I had proposed to organize an international conference on the reinforcement of the mechanism of resilience to the effects of climate change and the management of natural disasters in the Caribbean. One Caribbean approach. Agenda conflicts and the international context were not favorable to this important activity being held. So now is the opportunity for me to reiterate my proposal to organize this conference in a very near future because we are fifteen countries, but we are one single Caribbean. Mister President, it is clear that our organization is faced with a very difficult situation. It's important to put together our efforts to find the ways and means to reinforce the process of regional integration as well as defining jointly the outlines and the relation between the ACP countries and the European Union. The last report drafted by a special committee on the participation of Jamaica within CARICOM, the recommendations of the Committee of Legal Affairs bearing on the need to give automatic six-month residence to Haitian nationals visiting Caribbean countries, the repetitive delays in the implementation of the revised treaty constitute palpable proof that our organization is at an important phase of its history. Each one of us must do its share and make the necessary efforts so that our community can be even more soldered by taking our founding principles and the ideas that animated our founding fathers. We must together face these problems because alone, there's nothing that we can do. What unites us is stronger than what should isolate us and divide us. I take this opportunity and in this state of mind to solemnly salute the decision of the Government of the Commonwealth of Barbados to remove all obstacles to the free movement of Haitian nationals on its territory. And this in compliance to the provisions of Articles forty-five and forty-six of the reviewed Treaty of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, while saluting the efforts of the Secretary General, the Republic of Haiti proposes that we devote the time necessary to priority issues. We're talking about the political and security issues and the economic integration to the implementation of the provisions of the single market of the CARICOM, CSME. We are convinced that the implementation of this strategy will enable us to reinforce our integration in, on the world scene and play a more important role in the international context. The increase of intra-CARICOM exchanges and the diversification of products exported by the region will have positive incidences on our commercial balance and our capacity to assure the sustainable development of our countries. As to regional transportation, the reinforcement of competitiveness of the CARICOM countries goes through the improvement of infrastructures and means of transportation as well as updating of the legal regulatory framework. We only have one single choice, which is to take this path that will lead us to the reinforcement of our relations and the creation of wealth and increasing commerce and the free circulation of the people of the region in order to increase the well-being of our populations, ladies and gentlemen. The international context has not enabled us to hold the Summit of the Heads of State and Government of the States of Latin America and the Caribbean, CILAC, in twenty-seventeen because the Republic of Haiti had to represent CARICOM within the enlarged troika. But the eighth Summit of the Americas held in Lima, Peru last April, notably the one pertaining to the crisis in Venezuela, are illustrations of the complexity of relations in the hemisphere. These two facts show us that our region is crossed by a deep unease and the Republic of Haiti encourages the people and nations to privilege dialogue to flatten out their divergences. The Republic of Haiti, while reinforcing unity within our community, may can play a role of balance and be a factor of harmony within the hemisphere because we need this harmony today. I'm convinced that the participation of CARICOM in the international access, exercises, especially during the next G-twenty Summit in Argentina, will be a success thanks to the chairmanship of Jamaica. These international meetings must enable us to improve the dialogue and go more in-depth and develop larger cooperation in the best interest of the region and the international community in respecting and the self-determination of peoples. Excellencies, honorable colleagues, Heads of State and Government, we're gonna examine questions of major importance for our community during the summit. I have in mind the issue of regional and hemispheric security, the reinforcement of resilience to the management of natural disasters and reconstruction process, the operation of the Caribbean Court of Justice, the report of the Commission on the Utilization of Marijuana, and track community transportation, free circulation of goods and persons, notwithstanding the reform process within the CARICOM. I'm certain that our exchanges will bring out a wise decision in order to reinforce the efficiency of the community in its search for solutions that our countries are faced with as well as our populations. Thank you.
President of the Republic of Haiti, Jevanel Moïse.
Merci beaucoup, monsieur. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, the University of the West Indies, UWI, or the UE, is celebrating its seventieth anniversary during twenty-eighteen with the theme Seventy- with the theme Seventy Years of Service, Seventy Years of Leadership. The University of the West Indies indeed epitomizes the qualities of a sterling institution of higher learning in its record of service and leadership to the Caribbean region. The U W I continues to play a pivotal regional development role, contributing to the well-being of our people. In recognition of the U W I and its regional contribution, we invite you to turn your attention to a video feature produced by U E T V. After the viewing of this video, Sir Hilary Beckles, Vice Chancellor of the University of the West Indies, will perform an act of symbolic pinning of the Chair, of the Chairman of the Caribbean Community, the most honorable Andrew Holness.
It all began with Fobain, nineteen forty-eight, the decade after the nineteen thirty's democracy revolution of Caribbean peoples. It was as much an intellectual eruption as it was industrial unrest and the raging fires of the irrepressible spirit of indigenous self-determination. The University College of the West Indies was forged. One campus with a single medical faculty of thirty-three students at Mona, Jamaica. The incipient institution was rooted in the University of London, but within the first decade, regional political leaders rising from the labor movement and civil rights organizations made their first bold courageous decision to detach the colonial college from its imperial scaffold. Their vision was actualized in nineteen sixty-two, the rise of an independent University of the West Indies. With the collapse of the Federation of the West Indies in that year, governments made their second courageous decision to save the U W I for posterity as a regional university. They looked to the visionary Sir Arthur Lewis to serve as its first Vice Chancellor. The tri-campus university was created with two new campuses. First, in Trinidad and Tobago at Saint Augustine, and then in Barbados at Cave Hill. Governments had made their third bold courageous statement. A university dispersed across the region would best serve its many communities. Since then, every facet of regional development has been driven by the U W I: national independence, regional integration, economic transformation, global relations, public health, and the blossoming of Caribbean civilization. In short time, the genius of West Indian youth was unleashed. Many were inspired to take up the mantle of political leadership. Twenty-four graduates have since become national leaders and prime ministers. Erskine, Sandyford, P J Patterson, Kennedy Simmons, Patrick Mannan, Denzel Douglas, Kenny Anthony, Kamla Prasad Bessar, Keith Rowley, Bruce Golden, Owen Arthur, Dean Barrow, Keith Mitchell, Ruben Mead, David Thompson, Frand Stroth, Andrew Holness, Orlando Smith, Tillman Thomas, David Granger, Timothy Harris, Ralph Gonzalez, Hubert Minnis, Rufus Ewen, and Charlene Cartwright-Robinson, all sprung from the illustrious alumni, carriers of Pelican pride. Some of them were born with the rebel seed, and then their rebelliousness advanced and deepened the democracy process of the academy and the region, their call for a new West Indian order. The future of the region then was hatched to some extent on the floors of faculties and behind the doors of student dormitories. Students today, Prime Minister tomorrow, became a campus mantra. No university or college on planet Earth can claim, as does U W I, ten sitting political leaders among its alumni. U W I in this regard is like no other. Alumni Prime Ministers are being joined by colleagues, graduates of other fine universities, who are embraced fully within the U W I family. From Portia St. Sam Miller and Eugenia Charles to May Motley, Eushera Michael Manley and Edward Siaga to Basdeya Pandey and Lester Bird Junior, Tom Adams and Maurice Bishop to Alan Chastain, Gaston Brown, and Roosevelt Skerritt. These prime ministers have led regional governments dedicated to the sustainability of the U W I. Within its proud bosom are to be found other trademarks of distinction, including the Nobel Prize that sets it apart as an institution of global distinction. Today, the U W I is celebrated as an academy of fifty thousand students scattered across the region in its four campuses. Its open campus is constituted as a digital network of regional capacity that has shrunk the Caribbean archipelago into a global classroom. New members such as Bumuda and Turks and Caicos have since joined the U W I family, and in 2017, the government of Antigua and Barbuda proposed to host its fourth landed campus by merging and modernizing its many tertiary institutions into a single institution. And now, most dramatically, in the last three years, the university, Look Into the Future, has implemented its global plan, the Third Epic Restructuring. It has established centers for teaching, research, and advocacy in countries outside of the region. The U W I Suzhou Center for Software Technology now exists in Suzhou, China. The U W I SUNY Center for Leadership and Sustainable Development in New York exists within the SUNY system. The Center for African and Diasporic Culture now exists within the University of Lagos. Plans exist to establish similar U W I institutes in South Africa, England, the European Union, and Canada. Through these developments, the U W I will continue to support the region on the global stage.
I want to thank the University of the West Indies for hosting us. Big up, U E!
Thanks to you, our regional governments, our political leaders. To CARICOM, the U W I has been more than resilient. It has thrived. It has been a success. As its centenary beckons, calling forth its complete digital transformation, our determination is to advance science and technology innovations, commercialize research relevant to green energy and the blue economy, creating the cutting-edge twenty-first century university necessary to further serve and lead our region deeper into the Fourth Industrial Revolution. We shall succeed, because we are an academy guided by intellectual and spiritual values deeply rooted in our history of survival as a community. U W I, four campuses, one global university, one Caribbean.
The symbolic pinning of Prime Minister Andrew Holness as the new Chairman of CARICOM. And now, the Chairman of the Caribbean Community CARICOM will deliver his remarks. Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming the Chairman of the Caribbean Community and Prime Minister of Jamaica, the most honorable Andrew Holness, as he addresses this gathering and declares open the thirty-ninth regular meeting of the Conference of the Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community.
Excellencies, the most honorable Sir Patrick Allen, Governor General, and the most honorable Lady Allen. Your Excellencies, colleague heads of state and government, Mister Tony Hilton, representing the leader of the opposition, Chief Ministers and Ministers of Government, Ambassador Irwin LaRocque, CARICOM Secretary General, newly installed President of the C C J, Justice Saunders, members of the Jamaican judiciary. I wish to acknowledge former Prime Minister P J Patterson, whom we all agree is the epitome of the Caribbean man. High Commissioners and Ambassadors and Special Emissaries, representatives of regional and international organizations, distinguished delegates, members of the local and international media. Ladies and gentlemen, all welcome. Allow me to specially acknowledge my colleague CARICOM heads who have been re-elected or newly elected since our last meeting. Doctor the Honorable Keith Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada. The Honorable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda. The Honorable Mia Motley, the first female Prime Minister of Barbados. Heartiest congratulations and best wishes during your tenure in office. And you will notice that they have all won with big victories. So that is a sign of things to come. On behalf of the government of Jamaica, I extend a warm welcome to the thirty-ninth regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of State and Governments of the Caribbean Community. Jamaica last had this honor of hosting the regular meeting seven years ago. We are absolutely delighted to have another opportunity to share our friendship and our warm Jamaican hospitality. Yes, make them welcome, as Miss Lou would say. I am pleased to note that this meeting includes attendance of all heads of state and government, all. We have four associate members here as well, and we have the highest number of delegates ever for such a meeting. I wish to register my appreciation to the outgoing Chairman of the Conference, President Jovenel Moïse of Haiti, for his stewardship over the past six months. I also pay special tribute to the CARICOM Bureau, with whom I've had the honor of serving since January. I look forward to our continued collaboration as we work towards engineering innovative and enduring solutions. Let me convey sincere appreciation to Secretary General Ambassador Irwin LaRocque and the staff at the Secretariat for partnering with us in preparing for this summit. Jamaica looks forward to working closely with you over the next six months. Today, July fourth, marks the forty-fifth anniversary of the establishment of CARICOM. It is only appropriate for us, therefore, to pause and reflect on the many experiences along the road of regional integration. Our journey over the years has seen many significant achievements, of which we can all be justly proud. The survival of any institution, however, depends on its willingness to introspect and engage in a process of renewal. Indeed, this forty-five-year milestone represents an opportune time to evaluate our institutions. As we look towards the commemoration of our fiftieth anniversary, we owe it to the people of the region to deliver on commitments made to an effective process of regional integration that will improve the quality of their lives. The CARICOM single market and economy is undoubtedly the single most significant regional initiative that has occupied the attention of member states since its inception in 2003. However, progress has not been commensurate with our aspirations. Accordingly, we have agreed to devote significant time to further examination of the C S M E. The Prime Minister of Barbados holds the responsibility for the processes relating to the C S M E, and we look forward to working with her energetically towards a practical path to progress in this regard. Colleagues, as Chairman, I accept with honor and humility the responsibilities. I take this opportunity to reaffirm Jamaica's commitment to the principal objectives of CARICOM, including the expansion of trade and investment opportunities for its members, the promotion of foreign policy coordination, and structured functional cooperation. Jamaica's chairmanship will have a specific focus and intention, mindful of the rapidly evolving dynamics of our global world and the need for practical and effective responses to the changing realities. Our work will be undergirded by the theme Building Stronger, Resilient, and Secure Partnerships for Prosperity. With this in mind, we will call upon all member states to summon the necessary political will and determination to ensure that all programs and initiatives are strategically focused and geared towards meeting an ambitious process of reform. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, given the ever-changing global dynamics, it is imperative that we undertake an honest and thorough assessment of whether the community is appropriately positioned to collectively advance economic cooperation for the mutual benefit of our countries and peoples. Those considerations were at the heart of my decision to establish a commission to review the effectiveness of existing arrangements within the CARICOM community, as well as to explore the scope for strengthening partnerships within CARICOM and CARICOM Forum frameworks. I want to thank former Prime Minister Bruce Golding and the team that he led for the detailed work and practical recommendations they have made in their report. Since the release of the Commission's report earlier this year, there have been several insightful reactions, within and beyond our borders. Recently, the Jamaican Parliament engaged in an in-depth bipartisan exchange on the report and affirmed its general approval of the document, recommended that it be used as a guide for the fundamental transformation of the community, having regard in particular to the C S M E and the CARICOM institutions. In view of economic considerations, the Parliament adopted a landmark resolution, which was consistent with the spirit of the Commission's thirty-third recommendations. Among the main issues covered in the resolution is the need for CARICOM member states to make a clear and definitive commitment to establishing the single market with specific, time-bound, measurable, and verifiable programs of actions to fulfill all outstanding obligations within a period of five years. In the coming months, we will place special emphasis on those initiatives which have the most potential for streamlining at the national and regional levels. These involve those catalytic initiatives which are in line with strategic priorities of the community and are meant to steer us towards building economic, social, and technological change and development. We will seek to optimize the transformative power of our women, and I wish to acknowledge my wife, Juliette. And I wish to acknowledge my wife, Juliette. And Mia, I think you have a kindred spirit in Juliette. We will seek to optimize the transformative power of our women, who represent 51% of our population, as well as our youth. We have been severely criticized by our youth, who have grown weary of our promise to secure deeper integration within the framework of the single market and economy. Those promises have remained elusive and young people are calling for Caricom leaders and institutions to be more accountable for their actions. Integration should be real and meaningful to our people. Eras of importance to young people include the right of free movement and in particular, the right of skilled labor to move freely, as well as equitable access to our professional law schools as required by our modern tertiary education landscape. We must deliver on these so that our young people can have renewed belief in Caricom. It is my considered view that the single market is a victim of our own reluctance to fully and functionally establish it. As I have often stated, the CSM is the ultimate manifestation of regional integration. Some of its pillars represent the only real means by which our citizens will experience the process of integration. We must therefore, as leaders of this great community, relentlessly pursue the goal of overcoming our implementation deficit. We must address the critical role of the single market in supporting economic growth and development, in further facilitating trade in goods and services, the expansion of investment and the free movement of people across our region. The ever-growing challenge of crime, violence and security will be addressed fully and frankly at this summit and will be one of the main priorities of Jamaica's chairmanship. The incidence of gun and gang violence, though on the decline in some member states, has escalated sharply in others with severe effects on citizen security and economic development prospects. We must do everything in our power to ensure that the well-being of each of our citizens, as well as our economy, infrastructure and territory, are protected from all real and present threats such as the illicit trafficking in narcotics and firearms, transborder criminal activities and cyber attacks. If we fail in this crucial task, then our economic growth and sustainable development will be stymied and our life-sustaining industries, such as tourism, could be destroyed. These challenges transcend borders and are difficult, if not impossible, for any one country to solve or surmount alone. A synergistic approach is therefore required through increased vigilance, information sharing and networking among member states and our international development partners. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, building resilience to the effects of climate change and natural disasters in our region is an absolute imperative for our survival. The costs associated with the frequent recurrence of natural disasters are excessive. The World Bank had indicated that Hurricane Irma caused damages of 14% of GDP for Antigua and Barbuda. And for Dominica, the total damage was 226% of GDP. Imagine that. Our reality is one of deep vulnerability created by existential threats that far transcend our income status. Notwithstanding our tremendous resource constraints, the Caribbean is taking responsibility for designing appropriate risk mitigation, risk transfer and risk financing tools. And I want to just pause here for a minute because many times we talk about Caribbean integration in very lofty terms. And very rarely are we able to bring to our population the real benefit and importance of an institution like Caricom. It was one Saturday evening that I received a panic call that things could go awry in Dominica. I got on the phone and I spoke with my brother Roosevelt and confirmed that there was a need for support. We, as a small country, did not have the means to airlift our disaster emergency response team from the Jamaica Defense Force. But with the help of our good friends from Canada, partnerships, we were able to move 120 of our emergency disaster response team from the Jamaica Defense Force to support our friends in Dominica. But I want you to appreciate the context within which this happened. There were approximately, there were about three or four major hurricanes which hit the region. Our traditional partners were all tied up. Their assets were all tied up responding to other countries with which they have direct responsibility. So there was a space, a delay, a gap in responding to another sovereign state within the Caribbean region that we all, as Caricom people, are collectively responsible for. Without the brotherhood, without the friendship, but without the functional cooperation, but without the economic growth and prosperity in our own countries, our capacity to respond to natural disasters and threats like these which are becoming increasingly frequent and more intense, that capacity will be limited. So Caricom is absolutely important from a functional perspective. It is important from an economic perspective. It is important from a resilience perspective. It is the means by which truly we will be able to survive and recover from existential threats. Caricom is real and important. So organizations like SEDIMA, which represents part of our functional cooperation, is grossly underfunded. And as heads, we have to do more, within our fiscal limits. But it is an imperative for the survival of the region. And to that end, I wish to point out that as a result of the meeting of the World Tourism Conference held here recently in Montego Bay, there will be the establishment of a Global Resilience Centre on Tourism, which will be hosted at the University of the West Indies Mona campus. Tourism is usually the worst-affected industry as a result of natural disasters. But it is, for most, if not all, of our islands, the livelihood of our people. And therefore, specific attention has to be paid to our ability to plan for and recover from natural disasters very quickly. Friends, forging strong, fruitful partnerships with our bilateral and multilateral partners on behalf of Caricom is another priority area for Jamaica's chairmanship. We need more than ever to strengthen our engagement with our partners. We hear the calls made about the increasing trend towards the imposition of global compliance rules. It can be fatiguing, as pointed out by my friend Gaston. But our response is not to shirk from the responsibility, but to ask for fairness and equity in how global compliance regimes are conducted. We were recently given the opportunity to participate in the G7. Myself and the President of Haiti, the outgoing Chairman of Caricom, had the opportunity to place on the table with the developed industrial nations the challenges that small, open economies face from the existential threats of climate change, sea level rise, of security issues, but also of issues to do with the structure of the global financial architecture and the world system of ranking countries by per capita income. Which, when it is examined from the perspective of all our small, open economy, it is unfair to say that we are middle-income countries and therefore, we don't need any consideration in the international financial architecture. When in fact, just one hurricane could wipe out our entire economy twice over, as it did to Dominica. We place that on the table for consideration. We placed as well the issue of global compliance, that countries, small countries, are now burdened with having to put in place systems of compliance, whether it is with the OECD, whether it is with the European Union, whether it is with the United States. But as I said earlier, our response is not to shirk from the responsibility of global compliance, but to ask for fairness and support in developing and implementing the systems. Because at the end of the day, our small economies must stand up as examples of transparency, accountability and stand strong against any hint of corruption. Similarly, I've been invited to participate in the G20. This is the first time that any small economy will be asked to participate. And I will use the opportunity once again to raise the issues affecting small island developing states. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, there is absolutely no doubt that Caricom will have to contend with challenges, uncertainties and setbacks as we pursue our community-building efforts. This is not exclusive to our regional experience. However, in order to keep progressing, we will have to keep evolving. I unreservedly believe that it is worth recommitting to collectively harnessing the potential to drive development and prosperity in the region. Indeed, we have a responsibility to our people to drive real and measurable progress. Let us not fail them. Our collective future depends on our commitment to building stronger, resilient and secure partnerships for prosperity. I thank you and I wish for all of us a happy Caricom Day and a productive and rewarding summit. I thank you.
Prime Minister of Jamaica and Chairman of Caricom, the Most Honorable Andrew Holness.
Thank you, Prime Minister Holness. Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the end of our proceedings this afternoon and to evening. And we'd like to thank all of you for honoring us with your presence. We ask that you stand and remain in place until the procession of their excellences, the Governor General and the Most Honorable Lady Allen, heads of state, governments and associate members of the Caribbean community, depart the hall, after which you are invited to a reception in the courtyard.
On behalf of the hard-working team here at the Jamaica Information Service, we thank you so much for tuning into our live coverage of the opening ceremony of the 39th regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of Caricom.
Once again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It has been my pleasure.